Good morning, I'd like to call the regularly scheduled Planning Commission meeting for October 12, 2017 to order. If you would, please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. All right, Ms. Knapp, are there any changes to the agenda?
Good morning, Commissioners, we have a couple here. Item number two, LDC Chapter 11 Impact Fees and Chapter Two Definitions, there's a revised motion. Item number three, Impact Fee Administrative Procedures Manual, there's a revised motion. And items four, five, Ordinance 1736 and PDMU 05-19 Northwest Sector, there is a letter from the applicant regarding presentation and rebuttal time. This concludes the changes to the agenda.
Thank you, and again for clarification, there are two revised motions, is it two or one?
There are two, one goes with each of the items.
Right, so if you wish to make a motion consistent with what was suggested, just use the revised motion.
Mr. Chair, there's no need to read them in the record, you can just simply move the recommended motion entered into the record if that's what you'd like.
Thank you. Mr. Clegg, are there any changes from the Attorney's Office?
No, sir.
Thank you. All right, we're gonna move on to item number, wait, do we have minutes to approve? No minutes, okay. All right, we're gonna move on to Citizen Comments, this is the time that if you wish to make a statement regarding a matter that is not on today's agenda, you can come forward. If you have something you wish to speak about that is on the agenda, you'll have a time when that item is heard. So is there anybody in the audience who wishes to make a general comment on items that are not on the agenda? Okay, seeing none, nobody come forward, we're gonna go to the next item. And we have nothing on consent, no presentations upon request, the next item on the agenda is item number two, this is a, is this quasi judicial or?
No, sir, it's legislative.
Legislative, so no need to swear anybody in, so.
And, Mr. Chair, you're gonna handle two and three in a single public hearing, so we can do both items together.
Okay, Ms. Knapp, can you read item number two into the record, please?
Item number two is Ordinance 1724, this is Land Development Code Amendments to Chapter 11, Impact Fees in Chapter Two, which is Definitions. And then item number three is Impact Fee Administrative Procedures Manual, and this is a resolution adopting Manatee County Impact Fee Administrative Procedures Manual. Now, I'll turn it over to Dwayne.
Thank you, thank you. Good morning, Mr. Guthrie.
I'm Dwayne Guthrie, the Impact Fee Administrator for Manatee County. I've been in that role since roughly beginning of February. We want to go over both items, like Bill said, we're gonna go over the proposed changes to the Land Development Code and then talk about a new procedures manual. We have about 12 slides, I hope Aaron can get up for us, thank you, and if you do, Ctrl L, it'll go to, the one on the very right, yeah, you do Ctrl L and it'll go full screen. Thanks. Okay, we're gonna, let's see here, this is very sensitive. So just kinda give you an overview of the hearing process, we're going to have the Commission meeting today, then it'll go to the Board because it's LDC changes, it'll go through them twice, the meetings in early November and early December. And I mentioned that we're doing two separate items, we are revising the land, or proposing revisions to the Land Development Code, and then proposing adopting a new procedures manual by resolution. Now, actually, we do have a procedures manual, I'm embarrassed to say, it was approved back in 2004 and basically has just gotten so out of date that it was no longer being used. So technically, we are repealing the old one and adopting the new one. The overview of the changes, as you can imagine, there have been a lot of items that have changed over the 30 years that are so that we've been doing impact fees, so we've had code revisions all along, but basically every time you do a major new study, there's always gonna be some minor changes, but we haven't done a major relook at the entire Chapter 11 of the Land Development Code in quite a while, so there are a lot of housekeeping items to try to clarify policies and procedures. There are some specific auditor things that we agreed to do, the clerk periodically audits not only the revenues, which was going on back in early part of the year when I got here, but they also, a couple of years ago, did audits of the expenditures. And I just became aware of a section of the code that they actually asked us to look at a couple of years ago, and I just became aware of that after the document went public and went out for the notice of this meeting and we had the last Planning Task Force meeting. So Bill and I need to discuss that further, but I think I just wanna highlight those to you, I don't think there's a big policy change, it's more of just clarification of a section, and I'll note it for you later if you wanna talk about that in more details. One of the things that's happened since I've been working for the county is that the previous 2015 impact fee study had done all the calculations based on the unincorporated area, so earlier in the year, there were work sessions with the Board back in April and May, that basically they talked about wanting to be able to spend some money within the city limits. And so one of the proposed changes was to basically create the concept of old money done under the previous studies from the 2011 study prior, that was done on a countywide basis, and it would allow some money to be, from the old studies, to be spent within the cities, whereas the new money, the clerk's office went ahead and put those new funds in a separate account that's just designated for the unincorporated area. So that was something the Board gave policy direction to that they wanted us to implement, but we haven't done that yet, we've basically been holding off on that to just do all the changes comprehensively. So that's something the Boards already looked at and said they wanted to do, and this, the LDC changes will implement that change. The other one, capping county fees at 90% has not been decided yet, that is something that they also discussed during the work sessions, but they did not give any policy direction on that, they just said, put that on the item and we'll talk about it as part of the LDC changes. And so that could be across the Board, keep all the fees at 90%, which is, I'll just give you a little bit of history if you've forgotten, back when the fees were proposed, adopted, there was phase in, for the county fees, it was 80%, and then we're currently at 90%, and then if no change to the LDC happens, it'll go to 100% next April. So the Board is considering just keeping the fees at 90%, and that could be done across the Board for all the county fees, or they could just pick and choose, they could just say, cap the transportation fees at 90% and let the other ones go to 100. So those are the kinda things that the Board will be addressing. So the recommended revisions to Chapter 11, we'll talk about in detail, I have another couple of slides on that, and also the definitions. The Procedures Manual, I have several slides on that because that is trying to clarify a lot of the items and add some additional details. So for Chapter 11, we're making the policy document easier to read and understand, we're trying to move some of the administrative details out of the code into the Procedures Manual, and it basically falls into two main areas, that section dealing with the independent impact analysis, which means that if something unusual happens, either myself as the administrator, manager, I can do an independent study for somebody that has an unusual thing, and we've already done that for IMG, they're building some dorms right now, it hasn't gone public because the IMG is still looking at it, they're not finishing those buildings up until November, I believe, so that'll be coming out soon. So we can do it internally, or they can, a client can submit their own independent study, but anyway, we moved that process into the Procedures Manual. We also did an extensive rewrite, our extensive section of the Procedures Manual dealing with credits, and I'll have a couple of slides on that in just a moment to go over that. So we wanna make it clear, the county commission is still setting policy, and that's done by the impact fee, approval of the impact fee study and the fee schedule, the Land Development Code and the Procedures Manual, and then we're trying to make it so that staff can do the things that, you know, staff can do, like look at the specific on dollar amounts and things like that. We did make a recommended change where the Board will no longer be the appeal process, any kinda changes will be going to, I mean, appeals will be going to the hearing officer. And also, we're trying to make it so that the credit process eventually ends up into the new computer system that Building and Development Services is bringing online called Exela, and so those credit applications will be another type of permit process that'll be tracked, because right now, we've had the problem of credits taking years, and we were trying to get it down to months. And so we're gonna have specific deadlines and other departments and ourselves will have to comply with those things, and so we're trying to make that, clarify the rules of the game, so that everybody knows what's going on, and then make it as clear as possible so that it is more of a smoother administrative process.
Mr. Guthrie, when you say credits take years, do you mean the credits are out there for years and so the?
They apply for credits, that means that a developer is, as part of the, sometimes is required and sometimes it's not, but it might be required as part of a DRI or some kinda two-party development agreement, but they're building something that we consider to be a system improvement that we would normally pay for with impact fees, so like, it most happens on the road, so they're building an arterial collector road, in fact, I think I can just kinda go into those details in just a minute, but, so there's a component that's just site-related costs, and there's a component that's more of an impact fee item, and so it's been more of an ad hoc negotiation for every individual project, and we're trying to make it more of a policy kind of decision irrespective of the individual process, clarify how the math's supposed to be done and how the process is supposed to happen so that everybody gets through the process quicker. So that's kinda the overview, and we'll look at the specifics in just a minute.
Thank you.
So for Chapter Two, that's where we find the definitions, and when I first got here, I didn't even know that we had impact fee definitions buried in Chapter Two, because there was no flag in the Land Development Code in Chapter 11 saying, "Go to Chapter Two." So that's one of the things that we've added, and everybody needs to have definitions of all the terms, for instance, we didn't even have definitions of our non-residential categories, so that's a critical thing that we're adding. We're eliminating some legacy terms like bedrooms, because we now do residential fees by size of, for space, of air-conditioned space. We're clarifying some things that came up with auditor issues, like the idea of an ancillary use, we have the term accessory use now, so if you build a pole barn out behind your house, well, that's not an impact fee generating thing and that doesn't get charged an impact fee. Well, that similar kinda concept goes over to some non-residential buildings, like if you build a parking garage, well, nobody goes to a parking garage just to go to the parking garage, they're going to get to the office or the retailer or whatever, so the fees collected on that impact fee generating development, not on the parking structure, that's just, we're adding the term ancillary use for that type of situation. That also comes up with, when we do residential developments, like you have a big gated community, they might have a clubhouse, that it's really not a business where people are going to, it's only, you know, for the residents and the people in that area, so that kinda thing is an ancillary use, and the fees are assessed to the residential units in the development. So we had to clarify that, we were doing it that way or inconsistently doing it, but this makes sure that we do it the same way, and that's an auditor issue. And then we, in our definitions, we're clarifying some things, like that definition that I highlighted there at the bottom on capital multimodal transportation facilities, the one thing that, the primary purpose of that definition is at the bottom, you'll see the phrases about county roads outside the utility service area. One of the things that's coming is that the Public Works folks are gonna be revising our Series Five maps in the comprehensive plan that shows functional classification, arterials and collectors and that type of thing, where right now, there are some four and six-lane roads out beyond the, in the rural area beyond the utility service area, and we don't wanna be giving credits for those things, they're actually probably gonna pull those things off and scale them back, but until that gets done, we wanna clarify that we don't want people building four and six-lane roads out there and getting credits for it, so that's the main reason for that, it's kind of, that wouldn't be necessary if we had the maps amended today, so that's something that'll be coming back to you in the future. Okay, on the Procedures Manual, we did have some internal inconsistencies, so we tried to clarify some of those things, and we did have some confusion about how the math was supposed to be done. So for instance, when we have a traditional typical building in a suburban area, the unit of analysis, what we look at is, should be the entire building, because like how the Institute of Transportation Engineers does their traffic counts, they count cars like coming in and out of a warehouse site at the driveway, and the traffic count is based on the floor of the entire building. What we were doing is that we were looking at the details inside the building, we were assessing the office area separate from the warehouse area, or if there might be a manufacturing area, so there were internal inconsistencies, when the auditors looked at the fees, how did you come up with this number, I don't see this number on the building permit, that type of thing, and that's frankly not how we did the impact fee study and not how the Institute of Transportation Engineers does their traffic count. So we clarified that the unit of analysis is the entire building, we're not looking at the details anymore inside of a building. The only exception would be if you do fees in an urban area, we're actually stacking uses vertically, and like we have a suburban activity center, like in Lakewood Ranch area, we, and we're hoping to get more of those out in the Northeast, we're hoping to have another one, and the idea is that you might have some ground for retail and then office or residential above, in that case, we would assess the fees separately for those uses, but in a traditional suburban setting, no, we just look at what's the primary use of the entire building, and that's how we do the fees. Then we clarified some rules about how the math works on change of use, before, we were just looking at the total fee and basing the change of use on that, but actually, if you think about how the cash gets deposited, each fee gets into its own fund, and so we have to analyze each one independently, because not all the uses change in the same manner. So for instance, if you go from office to retail, some of the fees would go up and other fees would go down, because some are down based on vehicle miles of travel and other ones are based on employee density. So we have to actually analyze each fund separately, and so that's clarifying how that's done, because the funds are actually deposited into their own account for each type of infrastructure. We also wanted to clarify that we're no longer doing, collecting fees on residential additions, that was one of the internal inconsistencies in the code, in one place it said, "Any additional space you had to charge," another place said, "If you had an existing residential unit, you didn't have to charge," and so we went with that option, so you can add to a house now without getting, occurring an additional fee, and clarified that temporary uses are exempt. Logically, you know, that's just like a construction trailer or something like that, that's just their, a short term, it's not an impact fee generating development as far as permanent construction. So let's talk a little more about the credits for system improvements, the general intent is just to streamline the process, clarify the rules, and limit the credits to actual costs. It's that whole windfall versus wipeouts argument that you guys have probably heard before, where we don't wanna create a windfall where somebody gets, you know, basically too much money, and we also don't wanna wipe them out, we wanna just be, basically have the, it's almost like the person, the developer or the whoever's doing the system improvement, that is something we would normally do with impact fees, they're almost like a contractor, there is building it, and we're gonna reimburse them or make the accounting work by giving them a credit, lower impact fee on development that's related to that. So the credits are supposed to be based on the pre-development value of land, and we've made some changes to the Procedures Manual to talk about, an expedited approval process, if they base their land costs either on the current assessed valuation off the property assessor's data, or the most real estate sales transaction. So if you do that, then it doesn't have to go to property management, they don't have to review it. If we do do the route of having to get a appraisal, that last bullet point basically asks, is gonna require that the county be named as one of the intended users, so that we can hire our own appraiser to work with that appraiser, and they can hash out some of the differences in the technicalities over comparables and those kinda things, so we don't have the expense and the time of going out and get a whole new appraisal. So that's supposed to streamline that process and make it a little faster. So let's talk a little more about transportation credits, because that's really 99% of what we do, we do have one park credit going through the process right now, but it's usually transportation credits. So the idea is that we have arterials and collectors, and they have, they serve a dual function, they provide access to development adjacent to the arterial collector, and they also provide transportation capacity for everybody in the entire area. And remember, we have a quadrant system in the county, so it's basically, everybody in that quadrant should be benefiting to some extent from that transportation improvement. So we try to specify that math or the share, that's site-related versus system improvement, and we're recommending that it be done just based on simple, right-of-way width allocation, we're gonna use a local street as the base, and anything above that is gonna be a percent that's credited, and I'll show you the math in the next slide, just to kinda make that a little clearer. And we're also trying to make reference to the Public Works Standards Manual, we just recently, a couple of years ago, did the complete streets version, we added some additional options for the kinda streets that we're looking for, and so we have put some of those into the Procedures Manual and identified those as, to clarify, not only the right-of-way width, but the basic components, how, you know, does it have sidewalks, or does it have a multi-use path, is it 12 feet, is it eight feet, is it five feet, those are the kinda things we'd like to know right up front, and then it'll make it much easier to approve the credits. So we have the share that's eligible for the credits, we call that system improvement, and then we have a process so that if you are building anything that's Option C, which are the wider things, the bigger roads, through J, they're gonna require a pre-application meeting and a credit agreement upfront. Here's kinda the math, it's might be too small to see, but the ones without shading at the top are some of the smaller roads that basically would not require that a credit agreement. So if you're just doing a local street, of course, that's another thing, if you're doing an activity center, you might actually be building a type of Main Street or an avenue in a, in like the Lakewood Ranch suburban center, those kinda things would also be credit, but not as much, because they're not as wide. Then if you get down to the ones that are 100 foot or wider, then we have the credit application, so the basic local street is 50 feet, 100 foot right-of-way, there'd be a 50-50 split between what's eligible for the credit versus the developer's cost. As you get wider road, then the percentage of system improvement goes up, of course. So that clarifies how the math will work. The box on the right clarifies, once the Procedures Manual is adopted, the Public Works wants a $2,000 application fee to review credits, and that's gonna go to an effect, and that's part of that whole tracking process that we're gonna implement. That's actually been on the books since December, but it's been just kinda on hold, we haven't implemented that, so that's coming. So here's a little more detail on the transportation credits, so this gives you an idea of the options, that there's, like the options C through J that I was just mentioning, so here's an Option F and an Option G, they're both 120-foot rightaways, the one on the bottom is more of our traditional one that we've done for many years with a four-lane divided, and you can see that it has bike lanes as part of, adjacent to the travel lanes, and it has a narrow sidewalk. Well, the one on the top is what we call an urban parkway, again, it's based on the standards from the Public Works Manual, and it has a wider 12-foot multi-use path separate from the travel lane. So those are the kinda things that the developer could say, "I wanna do this one versus that one, that way everybody knows what to look for," and we, and clarify the process. So we also put into our Procedures Manual these 11 things that we require, because frankly, the Land Development Code says that for credits, we're only supposed to grant those if the county is kinda getting a better deal, I don't know where's the, we're getting the infrastructure cheaper than we could do it ourselves, and that is normally the case, because the private sector can normally build things cheaper than the public sector, and we only give a percent of credit, like you saw from the previous slide, we're never paying 100%, paying as in credits, we're always, we're getting that asset at 60% or something like that, or 40%, so we're never paying 100%. So we want, we don't wanna discourage credits, we probably wanna actually, it's a good deal for the county, but we've never tracked the information to verify that, and that's what I'm trying to do, because if you remember back to the 2015 study, we just had a total dollar amount per lane mile for transportation, it was like $3.3 million, included land, right-of-way, all the costs, total project costs, and so we have to get down to documenting what we actually are spending on the right-of-way and the construction, how many additional lane miles are we getting, and do the math to come up with a total dollar amount per lane mile. And what we wanna do, then over time, is build our analysis to actually see did our, how's our assumed cost compared to what we actually are spending, and it's a weighted average between what the public sector is spending, because the public sector builds roads, but the private sector also builds roads, and so that total cost is gonna be a weighted average between those two, and this is gonna give us the information that we need to actually make that determination. Now, we're going back and through all the credits that we've done in recent years to try to pull this out, but it's a lot of grunt work to go through all the files and come up with the actual numbers, because we never asked for this in the past, even though that's kind of a critical for just deciding if we are getting a better deal. So part of that process that I'm agreeing to do as the impact fee manager is that we're gonna be more involved in doing an annual report, before, financial management was the ones that are always doing the annual report, they just finished the one for fiscal year 15, 16, we're gonna take over and do the one for this fiscal year that just ended, and we're gonna start not only talking about the, how much money came in, what was, what went out, and what are our fund balances for each type of infrastructure, but we're gonna then talk about how the money's, in more detail about the money, how the money in the future is gonna be spent as far as capital improvements, what are we spending impact fee dollars on, and if there are problems that need to be fixed along the way, ready, rather than letting it go since 2004, we're gonna try to update our Procedures Manual every year and say, as part of the annual report process, saying, "This is what we've seen, our cost factor's too high or too low, or we've got this problem with the credits, we need to make a tweak," and so that's kinda the intent of that annual report. So financial management, at that bottom bullet point, they will be doing an internal audit every, I think it's quarterly, yeah, quarterly, where they're gonna, so before, we don't get surprises again with the clerks across the street, we're gonna have our own folks in-house look at how we're assessing things, and we'll do our own internal checks, and then hopefully that'll minimize the problems with audits in the future. Okay, this is my last slide, this is a new slide, for those that got the information ahead of time or back when we did the last Planning Task Force, we didn't have that in, this in here. So the issue about 90%, what would that do if we go, don't go to 100%? It's a tough one to say definitively what will happen, because if you think about how the math works, it's a function of the fee schedule and the amount of development activity. So we can decide what the fee schedule is gonna be, but we don't really know what the development activity is gonna be, so best guess is that if we don't go to 100%, the county will be probably not collecting or foregoing an additional roughly $2 million a year. You can kinda see the magnitude of the dollars by type of infrastructure, the big blue bar on the bottom is the multimodal transportation, that's the lines here, that's, you know, 75%, 80% of what we get. All the parks and recreation, our parks and natural resources is the next largest, and then the three small ones are libraries, law enforcement, and public safety, and so that's just, we've been asked to kinda, kinda look at that and provide that information just so, especially Commissioner Smith asked specifically for that, so this is his slide. So I'd be glad to answer any questions now, that's my presentation.
Thank you. Are there any questions for Mr. Guthrie, Mr. Ratliff?
Yes, sir. Who had your job before you got here?
Charlotte Fuquay, she's retired in July, so we were kinda cloning each other for a couple of months and then she's gone.
And these?
But we reorganized it, you know, it used to be under Financial Management, now it's under the county administration, so it's, we've changed several things around since then.
Well, so my thought, when I hear what you have to say, all sounds very positive, very appropriate, and kinda surprised that we're at this point doing all this stuff, but that's great. And so with this analysis, you're saying that we collect about $20 million, and 10% would be a $2 million shortfall?
Yes, sir. This year is actually a little more than that, we were just finishing up the numbers, it's about 24 million, but development activity has also increased. And because of the way the phase-in was done, we had half of the year at 80%, half of the year at 90%, so we've had higher, the fees did go up in the middle of the year, but we've also been cranking out a lot of developments, so it was roughly 24 million this year.
And your changes, do they model some other community that you got recommendations from, or somebody gave you guidance on this, you didn't think about one night, did you?
No, in fact, I should've mentioned that at the beginning, the, our consultant firm, Tischler Bice, and their subcontractor, White and Smith, did the initial draft of the Procedures Manual, and so they do work all over the United States and they do Procedures manuals, staff has been tweaking it and working with it since they did the original draft, but yeah.
So you think this would put us on the forefront of the kinda communities that are in our growth pattern, have our kinda conditions, and? are in our growth pattern, have our kind of conditions, and is a recommendation based on some of that historic value as opposed to-
Correct. And we've been working with adjacent jurisdictions, like Sarasota and Orange County and Hillsborough. We've looked at what all of those have been doing as we did our Procedures manual, so.
I think this is great stuff. I think you did a terrific job. You ought to be commended.
Yeah, we're getting there.
And Mr. Guthrie, just for clarification, you worked on the report previously as a consultant, so he's been involved much longer than-
Right.
And he wants to admit?
But I did, the draft of the Procedures Manual, I did not work on that initially. That came from Tyson Smith, who works for Whiten Smith.
Right. With regard to the credits, are they transferable?
Yes, and assignable. Right now, we make a distinction between those two, but I think we're basically losing that distinction in the current draft. But yes.
And again, for clarification, is it within each district, or can it be across districts?
For transportation is the only one that's done by area, and it's within the district.
Okay. And you said they are assignable, too?
Yes.
All right. The other question I had was, some municipalities are going to a mobility fee as opposed to an impact fee for transportation. Has there been a consideration or discussion with regard to that for Manatee County?
Yes. The next time around for transportation, I think we were intending to go that direction. No one has actually made that policy decision yet. We've had some preliminary meetings with people just to kind of evaluate that. The tricky part or the hard part is the whole concurrency system phasing out, and what does that do with, you know, vested rights, development rights, and all that kind of good stuff? So that's the complicating part of it. But I think that's the intent. So we're trying to decide, is it, should it be county-wide or just in, like, the more urban area, like the southwest? I don't really know. Nobody has gotten that far. But we realize that we're, you know, basically on a five-year update cycle. So the last study was 2015. So soon, we're going to have to start preparing for that. And part of that is for transportation mobility fee, it'll be that concurrency and transition as part of it. So I think we might deal with that upfront, kind of work out the specifics before we actually do the mobility plan and fee as a separate step.
Work out the-
How to handle the concurrency phase-out, yeah.
Okay, yeah.
Yeah, because that, it's, how do you transition from one system to the other is the hard part of it.
Right. I have experience with both the, our neighbors to the north and to the south. They've gone through that, and I, it's not clear to me what's the more advantageous route to go. It seems like each have their problems, each have their benefits. I'm just wondering what the, it seems to be a trend. I didn't know if Manatee County was going to be following that trend.
Staff is thinking that's going to happen. We haven't gotten any direction from the elected officials yet.
And then one of the other questions I have is, looking at the impact fee schedules, we have units less than a thousand, the smallest unit size is less than 1,000 feet, square feet. Is there any thought to change that? I know one of the things I've heard a lot of discussion about is affordable housing, and one of the ways to make housing more affordable is to reduce the size of the units, where you can get more units on a piece of property to spread the cost over it. What's the county's approach with regard to benefiting affordable housing? Is it by reducing, adding another size category possibly in the future, or?
That might be a possibility, and we certainly will be monitoring the size of the units as part of this annual report that I'm going to be doing. So if unit size, if we get enough units that are smaller, then it might make sense. We've also talked about the possibility of maybe doing an independent study for the educational fees, which are not by size, to see if we can find any documentation that the really small units actually don't generate as many students and maybe have some way to make that fee lower. But that's a complex thing, and we haven't really started talking to the school folks about that. I was hoping their new study would have been that way, but they didn't want to change their approach. But that has come up before, because we have, we now have the new affordable housing policy that we're, the county has agreed to basically pay the impact fees for affordable units that qualify for that, the program that redevelopment and economic opportunity department manages. So it would make our dollars stretch farther if we didn't have to spend as much money on the really small units, like Robbins Apartments. You know, they're basically a hotel room. They're very small. And so I don't know if they actually generate fewer students or not, but that's the kind of thing that we'll have to find out.
Right. And I think that would probably be something that would be important to convey to the general public, is you're not taking money, you're not providing relief for developer, you're providing relief for Manatee County in those instances.
And that affordable housing program, yes, because we're paying for that out of another fund. So it's not, we're not, now, I think the legislative delegations may be thinking of the idea of asking the legislature to allow us to waive impact fees for affordable housing, but that's not the state law at the moment. I don't know if that's going to make it through the process or not, but that was one of the ideas that came up. But that's speculation.
So that would have to come through the state legislature to allow waiving. Okay, all right, thank you. Mr. Bauer, you had a question?
Yeah, I was just going to actually dovetail on that, because I was reviewing the legislative agenda for the county. I think that was on there, to ask for waiver for affordable housing, which seems to be that's a legislative matter versus a local matter.
That's correct. Mr. Chair, Mr. Bauer, the concern right now is that they, when the board discussed this at its last legislative update, there is a concern that this may not be a good year to ask the legislature to look at that issue. They, you know, a couple of our commissioners went to Florida Association of Counties meetings where they talked about this, and the general consensus is this may not be the best year to invite the legislature to look at impact fees. Once you open that issue up, you don't know what you might get. So I don't recall exactly what the board decided to do, but they did express a lot of concern about it. It may have to wait for another year.
And again, would that be specific for Manatee County, or would that apply across?
It has to apply statewide. It's not something you could do specifically for Manatee County.
So even though, even though Manatee County might not have that opinion, there may be other counties who feel more passionate about asking the legislature to take action?
That may be so, but from what I've heard from our commissioners, who were at the most recent fact discussion, the general consensus among those counties was this may not be the best year to raise that issue. So I would like to, if I could, just make a couple of brief points about what's in front of you today, because it is, it's a housekeeping effort to clean up the code and create a good Procedures Manual to provide better clarity, to come into consistency with best practices with what other local governments are doing. It's not a new effort. It's been around for a good number of years. I've had to review numerous prior drafts over the last five or six years. There's been a recognition that there's some legacy issues in our code, in the way things are worded and described, that create a lot of confusion. And when the county did its general LDC update a few years ago, we left impact fees alone in that effort, because it's, it needs to be handled separately. It's a pretty complicated area. So they've been trying to do it for a while. Each time they got close to it, we ran up against another change to the impact fees and a new study. And so that made it difficult to get to this point. But there are, our office is in support of it, too, because we have recognized for some time the need to clarify a lot of these issues. But in terms of dealing with the impact fee schedule, that would trigger having to go back and update your study if you're going to start changing the schedule. That's a different type of process. We would handle that separately from a housekeeping ordinance, because you don't want to put the two of them together. An impact fee schedule triggers certain legal concerns about changing your impact fees, and so you kind of separate the two for that reason. And that's why this is coming to you now, and did not come to you as part of our impact fee updates that we did in the last couple of years.
Thank you very much. Mr. Bauer?
Mr. Quigley, so I'm a little confused if what we have in front of us is the potential of capping the impact fees at 90%, which I do want to touch on a little bit, but-
No, it's not. That is not in front of you today. That is not part of it. He was just mentioning that as background. You're not being asked to give-
It's in the Land Development Code, but that's really, that's more the board, I think, is going to be wrestling with that one. It is in the code, so, yeah. So they will be, this is a good time to revise it, but it's not-
The capping's not in the code. It's the-
Yes, the phase-in schedule is in the code.
Phase-in schedule is in the code.
Okay. Wait, could you just explain to them what the current phase-in schedule is right now and what the board has discussed possibly changing it to? So they understand-
Right.
You know, what's on the table, but it's not in front of them today in this ordinance or Procedures Manual. That would be a completely separate process if the board were to take that on. And Mr. Bauer, I apologize-
No, that's okay.
-for interrupting, but I do think it needs to be clear on the record what's in front of you.
Great.
It was a three-step phase-in, where we initially implemented fees at 80% in April of 2016. Then April this year, it went to 90%. April of next year is scheduled, according to the LDC, to go to 100%. So if the board does not act, then that's what will happen. So they have to say, change it, to keep that from happening, because they've made that decision three years ago or two and a half years ago, whenever it was.
Okay, and to further-
December of 2015 is when they decided.
And to further clarify, the school component is different.
That's separate. They had their own phase-in, and they just, you just recently saw an update to the school fee. So that, yeah, they basically replaced one study with a new study. So it all, their phase-in went away. They have a new study and new fee schedule.
And just to follow up, the board does have the prerogative to direct staff to go back and change what is currently in the LDC and potentially cap it at 90 instead of going to 100.
Right.
But as yet, we have not received that direction. If we do, that would have to be a standalone ordinance. We would advise against wrapping that in with various housekeeping changes to the code, because that triggers the potential, it's a change to the impact fee, essentially. And so it triggers the 90-day and all the other issues potentially, although it is, it's basically keeping it level, but it opens up how much you're charging as opposed to how you're administering your impact fees, and we want to keep those separate.
Okay.
So that's why you wouldn't see that this way. You'd see it separate.
Okay. Mr. Bauer?
Just on that subject, real quick, though, it was discussed that there's a $2 million, would be a $2 million shortfall if you would have a, if you would cap it at 90.
That's a reasonable estimate, yes.
I hear shortfall, much different than saying there's going to be a $2 million difference.
Correct.
Right? So has-
Potential shortfall. I mean, if everything happens like we anticipate, we would get an additional $2 million in revenue.
But I, but I see, when I see this, I just see a $2 million difference between what would be collected and what wouldn't be collected. So my question for you, and potentially end up going to the board, was, has, has anything been done to forecast the county's needs that the impact fees could go towards? And as a result of that forecast, do we see a shortfall versus, so for instance, if we're collecting $24 million this year, give or take, right? And the forecast suggests that, you know what, I think we only need 20. Then maybe that justifies the capping of, at 90%, because maybe we don't need all that like we thought we did. You see where I'm going? So I hear shortfall, and I hear our expenditures don't meet what we have coming in versus there's a difference between $2 million of what the 100% would create versus capping at 90%. What are our, have we identified what we think our needs are going to be versus what we're collecting?
Well, I don't want to dodge it, but there's really a two-part answer to that. Because the fees, the way we did the 2015 study, there was always a standard that said how much infrastructure we had per, like, service unit, so like lane miles of art materials and collectors. It was our, how much stuff. And then there was a cost factor. What do we spend per lane mile? So both of those things are kind of in the total fee amount. On some of the things, like parks, with part of the Park Master Plan, they've been saying we lowballed our cost factors, and they're proposing a whole different way to kind of measure stuff. So we're thinking we might have to redo the whole park fee after the Master Plan is done, but that's a separate decision. But I just use that as an example. So on the park side, we've gotten feedback that we're charging too little. On the transportation side, we've gotten feedback that we're charging too much, because the private sector builds things less. There's that weighted part between what we build and they build. So if you remember back to the discussions when we adopted the fee in 2015, the county administrator said, as kind of a rationale, that we want to be conservative on our cost factors to make sure that we didn't charge too much. So he, his personal recommendation back then was, maybe we should do 90% as a way to make sure that that one part of the math, the cost factor, we weren't overcharging. So it was like a little wiggle room. Now, there are a lot of things that you can get challenged on. You can get challenged on procedural issues. You can get challenged on a lot of different things. But the cost factor is one part of that, and he recommended that we do the 90%, just to give us some wiggle room on the cost factor. So there's the amount of stuff, and then there's how much does it cost? So, and they both go together to come up with a dollar amount.
To ask the question in a different manner, we've had a recent budget process. The consideration to maybe capping it at 90% was based on the need to meet that budget. It wasn't, we're going to cap it at 90. Now we have to modify the budget to meet our, that reduced impact fee generated.
Well, I don't want to overspeak, because I wasn't really that involved with those-
That's very simplified, a very simplified analogy, but-
In the future, I'll have a much better handle on that, but this year, I wasn't really involved with any of that.
We're not bouncing checks.
No.
Not allowed to by statute. That's illegal.
That money, again, can only go into a separate account, can only be used for growth-related expenditures. The auditors are all over us. So it's definitely, now, whatever money we have is, that's what we'll build. And so I think it's this-
Okay, it's fair enough, fair enough.
That's normally how it works.
The other question I had, Trump, you went over the appeal process. Instead of going to the board, it's going to go to a hearing officer.
That's the recommendation.
Okay. Who's the hearing officer? Is that a judge or magistrate, or is that an appointed person?
That would be an appointed person. That, we have a set of hearing officers under our code. They handle special permits, they handle certain liquor licenses. We're recommending that it go to a hearing officer instead of the board. The difficulty, and they're normally somebody with legal training. The difficulty is, we've only had a couple of them go to the board, but they're very complicated and very technical. Impact fee appeals are not like looking at a zoning decision. You get into a lot of very tricky issues, and it's not a good environment to deal with that in front of an elected board. It puts them in a very difficult position, because they have to wrestle with a lot of issues that require a lot of technical expertise.
Is there any appeal from the decision of the hearing officer?
Directly to Circuit Court.
Okay.
So it becomes a legal process at that point?
It does.
And that's where it ends up anyway, right?
Yeah, we've had to litigate this stuff before, so-
It's almost like arbitration.
We're speaking from experience here. It's not, it's very legalistic and can be litigious.
Sounds like fun.
And my last question, just from my own education. How come it's cheaper for the private sector to build these things than the public sector?
Come on.
I'm serious.
I'm not sure if they have to meet the same standards and processes that we do, and I think they can do it faster, and time is money and that kind of thing. The process is, we have a public process and all that. So it's, I think we have more complexity and bureaucracy than they do.
Typical government, right?
Well, by law, they can negotiate things that we can't, quite honestly. I mean, there are some things embedded in Florida statutes, particularly for road projects, that give them some leverage that we just don't have. And that's the way the state law is set up, and that's the way the legislature wants it. But it does, they can do it cheaper most times.
Very good. All right, thank you.
That's it. Any other questions for Mr. Guthrie? Okay, thank you, Mr. Guthrie. I believe we need to open this up now for public comment. So if there's anybody from the public who wishes to come forward, please do. Good morning, Mr. Vogler.
Good morning. Uh, my name is Ed Vogler and I want to say we appreciate very much, uh, the activities. But I want to make a few, uh, comments, uh, questions really for the record. Not seeking answers today, but, um, want to make sure that these matters are considered as we go forward in this project. Of course, legacy issues, um, need to be resolved, but it also portends a, a change in past practices. And, um, I've had the opportunity to work in this area a lot and I think that there may be some unanswered questions. For example, can you negotiate credits in a local development agreement different than the procedures manual as part of an overall agreement that is considered to be in the best interest of the county? Open question. Uh, several provisions of state law provide for mandatory credits. And we encourage consistency or at least known divergence where the county is taking a different position. We have had circumstances where, uh, our view, at least of state law, is different than the way, uh, others have read local ordinance. The, uh, procedure for appraisal challenge, it's not just only impact fee credit challenge, but the amount of, and therefore, I assume the appraisal challenge will follow the same methodology that was just described to you about, uh, challenges generally. And what about credits for right-of-way contributions that are requested by county staff but are not necessary to support a project? And so the way I'm reading this, um, that credit would not exist for the first fifty feet of roadway, even though, uh, landowner is being asked to dedicate or reserve a hundred percent. And so, uh, also what happens when you, uh, reserve a hundred percent? So remember, this is landowner's property, they've set aside land for future right-of-way and you're later going to have a credit for that. When is that valued? At the time you started your project, which is what was intimated, or at the time you make the dedication? I mean, these are open questions that, I mean, we deal with in a practical way and, um, I think they need to be considered. Um, I, I'm happy that, um, we don't normally have matters, uh, of the following concern, but a two thousand dollar fee, when the credits are very small, like a corner clip or something like that, might really be a little bit, um, too much. And maybe, I know the fee schedule's been adopted for a while, but maybe there should be some administrative relief if it's something that's really, really small. Um, you know, a homeowner or somebody can get credits or can, you know, they're building a house or some, you know, I, there's some level of fairness there. So we applaud this issue. I wanted to make these record comments for today and we're going to be watching it as it goes forward as well.
Thank you. Mr. Vogler, um, I, I know you've done developer agreements with the county previously. The, one of the examples you gave was with regard to, um, I don't know if reserving right-of-way is the correct, uh, term, but if, if, uh, somebody who's doing a community sets aside an area for, um, a future expansion, in your experience, is that best handled through a developer's agreement where it's almost a negotiated and acknowledged, um, process as opposed to waiting to after the fact and attempting to get credit at a later date?
Different developers pursue it differently. My normal experience is that we would like to collaborate with the county upfront and provide all the right-of-way for, for the future needs of the county, not just the project, and negotiate a local development agreement that extends to CLOS. When, when you have a large project, maybe a thousand units or twelve hundred units and you, you have a transportation concurrency certificate that goes for three years, it's not satisfactory to accommodate the absorption of that project. So to protect the project upfront, we'll often offer to grant these right-of-ways and get credits for it. And of course, it feels like today, the credits are going to be skinnied down because the first fifty feet you just heard is not creditable. And so, uh, but the second way some people do it, people that don't do that, they'll actually plat a, the right-of-way and, and they'll say it's reserved for future right-of-way. And what that means is the landowner still owns it and he's platted the project. So the right-of-way is, the alignment is set. And then sometime later, there'll be a, a dedication or a, a deed conveyance. And so those are two different things and we've, we've worked on both.
Okay, can I ask Mr. Rutledge? Mrs. Vogler, thanks, I always appreciate your comments, I think they're always thoughtful. Wh- what's your sense of this magistrate kind of doing the overview versus going to the, uh, commission for your approvals and that? Which, general opinion of that? Fear, I mean, is it?
No, 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 no. I, I mean, I just, I just, the, the, the level of complete response is what I'm trying to analyze. As, as a lawyer, I like an evidentiary proceeding because we don't usually make arguments that we don't think are sound and supportable and, and, and would be decided favorably to our side. There, there are some people in the world that think they do better in front of a political body. Uh, my orienta- my orientation is to think about the evidence and the facts and what can I prove and how can I win? So I, I actually like that better as the short answer.
And I think that's interesting to me because I do think sometimes it, it's hard to decide whether you want everybody in the world to see it or it's like making sausage, you don't want them to see it, just do the right thing. Uh, generally, your comments about the changes being made, do you think that moves us forward? I mean, you see a lot of these things, this is a, a progression into the right direction for how we've been handling stuff?
Yes, yes, but I, I think there may be a few substantive changes that are in here that are different than past practices. And I, I have had that experience and others in the consulting community will, will speak for themselves. But we had a, a major revision to the LDC and a couple of years ago that was viewed as just cleanup only. But there's some substantive changes in there. And, you know, I, I mean, for me, Mr. Rutledge, you know, I was thinking about, this is a nice break from our, our Aqua days, you know? But, but for me, I mean, just coming into the hearings and getting prepared, it's very hard to read these future ordinances. It's hard to read these future laws and to really understand. I mean, in addition to the fact that no one wants to pay you for that, there, there's not enough time in the day. So I'm not sure yet. And that's why I wanted to make the comments today because we've shared this before and some of these comments. This isn't a big surprise, but I, I applaud the effort. The effort needs to be done. The, the question is, what is it, you know, is there any little things that are unknown?
Thanks, thanks for your comment. Thank you, Mr. Vogler. Is there anybody else who wishes to come forward and speak on this matter? Anybody at all? Okay, seeing nobody come forward, we're gonna, we're gonna close the public, I'm sorry, the, uh, the comment portion of the hearing. And, uh, guess we're, uh, we're being asked.
Could I just, just clarify one state, just so that Mr. Vogler and I work together on a lot of these transactions. We're not, we're not presenting this as a non-substantive ordinance. The, the changes are substantive. We, we've said that from the beginning. What's not changing is the fee schedule. There's a difference between a non-substantive ordinance and an ordinance that amends the fee schedule, uh, or doesn't amend the fee. So I just want to make sure that distinction is.
So this isn't a restatement, it's a, uh?
No, there are some changes because as I said, we're trying to bring, bring ourselves into compliance with what we perceive as best practices in local governments around the state today. And, and Mr. Guthrie has, has surveyed those and, uh, several times at our encouragement, we, when he's brought an issue to us, we said, well, can we look at what other counties are doing with that issue to make sure that we're kind of following the herd here and doing things the way that are, that has worked in other jurisdictions? So, but it is a substantive ordinance, no question about it.
Thank you very much. All right, if there's no further discussion, the chair will enter, entertain a motion.
Mr. Chair?
Mr. Bauer.
I'll give a shot. Uh, I move to approve the LDC Chapter eleven and Chapter two, as well as the impact fee administrative procedural manual as a further revised motion provided by staff.
Okay, for clarification, we need a motion for each item.
Yeah, we need two separate motions. So you could just move the recommended motion for the first one and then move the recommended motion for the second one and two separate votes, please, so.
Mr. Bowers, can you amend your motion, please?
Move to amend Chapter eleven, LDC Chapter eleven and Chapter two as further revised motion provided by staff.
Thank you very much. Have a motion, is there a second?
I'll second.
Mr. Ron, second. Uh, any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, like sign. Chair votes aye, motion passes five-two-zero with, uh, two folks being absent. Uh, chair will entertain a motion on item number three.
Move to approve the impact fee administrative procedural manner, uh, further revised motion provided by staff.
Uh, motion by Mr. Bauer, is there a second?
Second.
Mr. DeLezley, second. Is there any discussion? Chair will call the matter to vote, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, like sign. Chair votes aye, motion passes five-zero. Thank you, Mr. Guthrie.
Thank you all very much.
Thank you, Mr. Clay. Do we need to take a break or?
Do you want to lead a recess?
Oh, sorry.
We're okay.
Didn't see Ms. Schenk sneak in. All right, we're gonna, we're gonna move on to item number four. Okay, now it gets fun. Item number four is a, uh, uh, item number four and five are both quasi-judicial, which means you have to be sworn in to, uh, provide testimony or statement. So if you intend to speak on item number four or item number five, please rise to be sworn in.
Do you swear or affirm that the factual statements and factual representations which you're about to present to the board will be truthful and accurate? Thank you.
Thank you very much. Ms. Knapp, can you read item number four into the record, please?
Item number four is ordinance seventeen thirty-two, Northwest Sector DRI twenty-six. This is an amended and restated development order for the Northwest Sector Development of Regional Impact to approve changes to the master development plan, MAP H, and the development order to add two-point-three acres of commercial area and subtract two-point-three acres of residential area and to update the phasing and build-out dates to reflect legislative-approved extensions and update conditions to reflect compliance with required requirements. The companion ordinance is PDMU zero-five-nineteen GR eight, again, Northwest Sector DRI. And this is to approve changes to the general development plan and the ordinance regarding maximum number of gasoline pumps, deleting a condition regarding pedestrian access on Parcel Four, reallocate acreage to Parcel C-two from Parcel C-three, reallocate acreage and entitlements to Parcel B from Parcel D, reflect the satisfaction and transportation mitigation of impacts of the project through build-out, update the phasing table to reflect legislative-approved extensions and other amendments of internal consistency. The Northwest Sector DRI is generally located, um, at Lakewood Ranch Boulevard, south of Forty-Fourth Avenue East Extension, west of Lorain Avenue and north of State Road seventy.
Thank you, Ms. Knapp. All right. We'll go ahead and, uh, ask staff to introduce the item.
Good morning, Rosina Leyde Bar Estaf, and I have been sworn here. Representing the applicant is Katie LeBar and Mr. Vogler. And after their presentation, I am able to do a presentation or answer a question.
Thank you very much. Good morning, Mr. Vogler.
Good morning, Ed Vogler. I have been sworn.
Thank you.
I wanted to clarify that we're, uh, we've opened both, uh, the public hearings.
Correct, correct.
Okay, and then you'll act on them separately.
Yes, sir.
All right, thank you very much. I just want to provide a, a brief framework for, um, applicant's presentation. This, of course, is a very large project, but the request for change to, um, an ordinance is very focused and, and very narrow. Um, the applicants consist of essentially two landowners. Schrader Manatee Ranch, SMR, which are developers of Lakewood Ranch, and, uh, two companies that are owned by Neil. And so this is a, a joint application, but the changes are really being pursued by Neil. And so, for example, um, Neil is, uh, pursuing this along with SMR, but these changes relate primarily to Neil lands. Neil, uh, purchased, uh, what, a project known as Central Park prior to the time that the DRI was pursued and approved. So over the years, Neil and SMR have been working together on this SM, on this, um, DRI and our project is Central Park. The ordinances do cover all of the DRI, though. So that's why you see the level of complexity. You say, well, what about all this stuff? How can it be so simple if it's got all this stuff in it? Well, that's, none of that's changing, it's legacy. So Central Park is our project. The residential portion of Central Park is virtually complete. I think we almost be sold out of there now, it's over eight hundred units, very successful project. And the other thing I'd wanted to add, just for clarification, because you may have some questions about it. SMR negotiated with Manatee County a really good and big, uh, local development agreement and it was for the construction of what we now know as White Eagle Boulevard, formerly known as Pope Road. And under that agreement, they satisfied many of the transportation comments that were in the DRI. And so that's why you see a lot of these strike-throughs on transportation issues. But to understand those in context, there is a literally huge, like twenty million dollar credit of impact fees and some other things that SMR did and built la- and built White Eagle Boulevard and, and that was all by LDA. So that's, uh, explains the framework and the details are for our excellent planner, Katie LeBar.
Thank you. And Ms. LeBar, I think you requested additional time if necessary and that's, that's been given.
We did, uh, thank you, uh, Mr. Chair, Commissioners. I am Katie LeBar with Stan Tech, representing Neil Communities of Southwest Florida, and I have been sworn. I did, uh, submit a letter into the record, uh, just requesting, since we were opening both items, that, uh, all of the time be combined for, for that, just because I think that it will, um, provide for efficiency in presentation. I don't think I'm going to need all of the time, though. The request that you have before you today is, uh, a development order amendment and a revisit, revision to MAP H, revised zoning ordinance and general development plan for the Northwest Sector DRI. This is not a notice of proposed change because the requested changes do not increase the number of external PM peak hour trips. Uh, they do not reduce open space and conserved areas within the project. And so, uh, in accordance in, uh, in accordance with state statute, the amendment only requires local government review and approval. And as, uh, Mr. Vogler indicated, the request is largely intended, uh, to update the ordinances and plans to bring them, uh, bring them into, uh, bring, make them consistent with what's been approved and developed, uh, since two thousand and seven. Northwest Sector DRI was approved by the Board of County Commissioners in two thousand and seven. The entitlements provide for four thousand five hundred and twenty-two residential dwelling units, one hundred and five thousand square feet of office, two hundred thousand square feet of commercial floor area. The site is fully zoned PDMU and it lies within the UF-three, the urban fringe, three dwelling units per acre and RES-one residential, one dwelling unit per acre, future land use category. Central Park is entitled for eight hundred and twenty-six residential units and one hundred and fifty thousand of that two hundred thousand square feet of commercial for the entire DRI. So it's, the, the two commercial parcels on, since, within Central Park are, uh, the vast majority of commercial development that lies within Northwest Sector. Uh, none of the proposed amendments before you today seek to change any of those entitlements. We're not asking for anything anymore density or intensity. We're just, um, making some adjustments to land areas. So we intend to add approximately two-point-three acres of land that was previously allocated for residential development to Parcel B. Parcel B is located at the southeast corner of Lakewood Ranch Boulevard and, um, Forty-Fourth Avenue East in Lakewood Ranch. Um, I've got an exhibit, I think might help clarify location. And so, and I've colored, I've colored the exhibit, but, uh, southeast corner of Forty-Fourth Avenue and Lakewood Ranch Boulevard. Uh, during the course of development of Central Park, uh, a remnant parcel, uh, came into, came into being. And so, again, the purpose of this modification is simply to bring that, uh, bring that little piece into the larger commercial parcel so that it may be developed with commercial uses in the future. This amendment is also intended to allocate, more accurately, reflect the allocation of commercial entitlements between these two parcels. So between the two, you have a hundred and fifty thousand square feet. Uh, we propose to, uh, allocate one hundred nineteen thousand six hundred and fifty square feet to Parcel B and then, uh, the balance, which is thirty thousand three hundred and fifty, uh, square feet to Parcel D, which is at the southwest corner of, uh, Forty-Fourth Avenue East and White Eagle Boulevard. The second request before you today is to revise, um, the cover sheet of the general development plan and a condition, uh, develop, uh, site development condition relating to gas pumps. Uh, this DRI, uh, limited Parcels B, D, and E to, uh, a maximum of six gas pumps if a gas station was to be developed. Um, given the fact that the population of Lakewood Ranch continues to expand and grow and the roadway network therefore also expands and grows, with the expansion of commercial office and light industrial uses nearby, the demand for neighborhood retail and convenience, uh, uses increases. Uh, convenient stores and gas stations, uh, continue to evolve in the marketplace, creating a one-stop shop for, uh, fast food dining experiences, uh, for the, the residents of the neighborhoods. And so, uh, after a review of recent approvals of gas stations throughout unincorporated Manse County, uh, we found that the, the number of gas pumps varies from eight to twelve. Uh, and, and the number of gas pumps is largely a function of the, uh, parcel acreage. And so given, uh, just. And so, given, just given the change in trends, we felt that it was the right time to look at this, this ordinance and this general development plan and modernize it a bit. And so that is, that is simply our request, is to modernize, to ask for ten pumps. We believe that provides flexibility so that when, particularly parcel B, the larger commercial parcel, when that is subdivided, you've got, you've got a range of options in terms of how many potential gas pumps could be located should gas be identified as a viable use at that location. I will note that after coordination and communication with staff, we did amend the condition that's in the draft zoning ordinance to accommodate additional setback from residences along the southern boundary of parcel B. And so we are providing for a hundred and sixty-foot setback from gas pumps in that location. Elsewhere, we provide a hundred and twenty feet. As Mr. Vogler stated, another main, one of the bigger changes to this zoning ordinance and development order is to, to simply reflect that the transportation impacts have been mitigated, and I identify that the local development agreement that was negotiated by SMR with Manatee County effectuates those, that, that provision for mitigation. And finally, we propose to update the phasing and bill, phasing table to reflect the legislative updates. So the expiration and build-out dates are accurately reflecting what, what they are today. Other legislative extensions are available, and the expectation is that SMR will take advantage of those, and those dates will be further extended. Again, we've worked closely with staff on all of the requested amendments. We appreciate their coordination and collaboration. We are in agreement with all of the conditions as stated, and we request your recommendation of approval today. We're available to answer any questions that you may have.
Thank you. Ms. Labar, you made a, a statement regarding allowing, going from, I believe, six to ten pumps. Is that, is that explicitly stated in the cover, on the cover of the GDP? Or is it a condition of the ord, of the authorizing ordinance?
So it's both. The, there was a, there was a limitation of six gas pumps placed on the prior version of the general development plan. And, and it was, it was identified on, on the cover sheet under the range of uses for parcels B and D. That was a self-imposed limitation. That was not a staff-imposed limitation. It was something that the master developer thought was necessary at the time that this DRI was originally approved. And then condition, I'll have to take a quick look. It was, it's condition S-two-K-three of the zoning ordinance specified parcels B, D, and E as, as having that six-pump limitation. And so that's, that's the condition that's being modified to both allow for the ten pumps, but also recognize the additional setback for parcel B.
So it's by, it's by the ordinance, not by the cover? I was looking on the cover, under B, D, and E, it just says gas pumps.
It was eliminated. We eliminate, yeah, it was previously shown in parenthetically, and we eliminated that.
My, my question is, because it does not explicitly state the limit is ten, the ordinance does.
It governs that, absolutely. You have to read them together. You cannot read them exclusively.
Thank you. Mr. Bauer.
Is there anything currently built in parcel C-three?
That is fully developed for residential development, yes.
That's built, people have moved in already?
Absolutely, yes.
Okay. Remind me again what, under the previous plan, what you could do in parcel B?
The range of uses, there's no change to that. And so it is a commercial parcel.
Okay.
And I can, as, as stated on the general development plan, you've got uses that range from retail uses.
It was always commercial use?
Absolutely. It's, it's always been commercial.
Okay.
The only, the only difference is that, again, there's a two-point, this, it's in green on this, on this sheet right here. It's a remnant parcel that was allocated in the original DRI for residential use, and we are.
That green was residential?
It was, it was allocated for residential purposes, yes. But it's zoned PDMU.
I get it.
So these uses that we're proposing.
Same thing would apply to C-two and parcel D, I presume?
Parcel C-two, again, is res, all residential.
Right.
And.
D was always commercial?
Parcel D was always identified as a commercial parcel, yes.
Okay. So would you address, did you see the public comment that was submitted?
I did.
So.
And there, and the concerns raised, if I, if I'm recalling the correct public comment, the concerns raised were related to the pedestrian access points. And that's, I'm sorry, that's something that I, that I did not identify in my presentation. But there are two pedestrian access points that are shown on the general development plan, and they are also shown on the preliminary site plan. And with this amendment, we propose to eliminate those pedestrian access points because the citizen, you know, given safety concerns and maintenance, cost of maintenance concerns, the residents of Central Park have indicated that it would certainly be their preference not to have those connections. And the developer, Neil Communities, is in agreement with that request. And so this, this exhibit is, again, just a close-up of the preliminary site plan for Central Park, and it identifies the location of the two pedestrian access points that we do propose to eliminate with this amendment.
The origin of those connection points was?
Originally, with the original approval of Northwest Sector DRI, I believe the southern access point, it was originally identified as a full vehicular access point. This pedestrian access point was to be cited, you know, if, if identified as being one that was necessary. It was sort of an ancillary access point. With subsequent amendments to the preliminary site plan for Central Park, the vehicular access was reduced to a pedestrian access. And I will say that the original vehicular access was a condition imposed by the board that was in place at that time. It was not something that was necessarily proffered or recommended by the applicant. And so, again, during the course of development, given the fact that the residential component is completely built out, and now you have residents who have a voice and have, have concerns, given the fact that Central Park is a gated community, a gated community with a series of gated neighborhoods within. So you've got a, a long series of gates within and along the perimeter of Central Park.
You've got a compound.
It minimizes, it minimizes the, the, it minimizes the ability to have the connectivity that, that may have been previously envisioned. And given the fact that they're private streets, it also further limits the, the free flow of access that one may have envisioned earlier on in the process.
That, but that vision was prior to anybody living?
Prior to, prior to what is now reality.
Potentially something built in that commercial area to give them walkable access, that they might be convenient. Now you've identified that, A, it's not something that they want.
Their concerns.
So you're pulling that out, just as though you requested.
Exactly.
Okay, beautiful.
Thank you. Mr. Rutledge.
First, as a point of disclosure, I, I have talked to people about this property at some point in my last couple of years for clients. So full disclosure, I know a little bit more maybe than some people, so I just want you to know that. I don't have any current interests. I have no current clients looking at it, so I just want to.
And you're referring specifically to?
To this commercial, parcel B. Could you focus on the site that you're proposing for the gas station?
We're not, I'm.
You're not?
I just want to clarify, we're not necessarily proposing a particular site for a gas station. We're merely making modifications to the approval documents that expand the potential.
Understood.
And so we don't have, we don't have a buyer for any property at this time. We're just simply making it.
Opportunity.
Exactly.
My question is this. So I have a little experience with clients like Race Track and Wawa and some of these other, which I think are the new elite kind of group. And I think the change is from a convenience store to a restaurant. I mean, I think that's the reality of some of these. So my question is, does ten pumps give you the opportunity to put all of the best users in the gas station business?
We believe that it does. Again, in the course of doing some research, trying to determine what that right number might be for our request, a number of the more recently approved gas stations within unincorporated Manatee County included the likes of Race Track and Wawa. And so I would expect that having that ten-pump maximum limit would, would enable those users to consider this property potentially.
In my humble experience is when public access is desired by the community, they'll knock down your fence and get in. And so I guess my question is, even though you might hear from certain members that they don't want to have access, people will maybe find that later, is that prohibited from here on out? I mean, would that be?
Well, I think that just from a functional standpoint, that would just simply be a challenging in this, in this particular location for, for parcel B because, again, the residential component is fully developed. The, there is a six-foot berm with an eight-foot wall atop that six-foot berm, and it's fully planted at this point. And so potential for access, they're going to have to go around.
All right. We'll move on to the staff presentation. Ms. Labar, thank you.
I have a slideshow that maybe helped you understand a little bit. What is the request here? It summarizes the request for the DRI. That is, like Katie Labar says, is to add the two-point-three acres to the commercial, to the commercial parcel, update the build-out, and also on conditions to reflect the actual requirements. And this is the request that she explained for the GDP that is more in detail. This is the aerial that shows the Central Park that is located in the nor, I am terrible with, nor, corner of the northwest sector. And as you see, you're going to see another aerials, that is, all the residential component is already built. The future land use, like the applicant mentioned, is UF-three with a section of this little corner that is RES-one. And all the DRI is on PDMU. The DRI and the GDP were approved in two thousand and seven, and the DRI was amended in two thousand and thirteen. And there are many changes, many revisions to the zoning ordinance to more, to reflect the actual conditions for dimensional criterias and change entitlements between parcels. As the applicant stated, the actual development totals that are approved or entitlements are four thousand five hundred residential units, two thousand acres, two thousand acres of commercial, and one thousand acre of offices. And there are a few special approvals that has been granted previously. And this is the MAP-H, and this is the area in which the parcel, the two-point-three acres, going to be added to the commercial area. And this is the GDP. And here, in the next area, I identify the parcel B, parcel D, and parcel E, that are the commercial parcels that we are talking about, and parcel three, and parcel two. Here in this slide, I show like what is the change. There are two-point-three acres for parcel C-three to parcel B. And it's important to clarify that the uses are no changes, there are no increase in the entitlements, and this portion of the site was previously approved for residential support uses. Was no commercial uses, but they have entitlement for residential support uses like daycares, church, and place of worship. The other change is to add two-point-five acres from parcel C-three to parcel C-two, and to reallocate acreage and entitlement from parcel D to parcel B. And this is a common practice with the DRIs that shows and reflects what is already built, especially with the residential areas. This is the current layout of Central Park that show all the residential component is already built. And this is the next condition that the applicant is asking to increase the number of gas pumps that could be located in parcel B, parcel D, and parcel E. And as the applicant stated, we make an agreement to increase the separation from one hundred and twenty to one hundred and sixty feet in this area for the location of the gas pumps, and maintain the separation in these particular locations since there are pumps already, stone water pumps, that separate, create an additional buffer. We make a research checking the size of the actual gas stations, and the pattern is between eight gas pumps and twelve gas pumps. And it looks reasonable. And in addition, staff taking consideration that the gas pumps were previously allowed in these parcels with less distance from the residential component. And if they're going to be new gas pumps, going to be direct into the opposite side in which is located the residential area. They're going to grow close to the residential, they're going to be in the different, the other sides. Here are the parcels with an aerial. This is the parcel B, in which we request additional separation, and the applicant agree. And this is like a says, parcel D, in which there are pumps that separating the residential units to the, to the commercial parcel. And the parcel E is already built with a community center and unlikely going to be developed, redeveloped with a gas pump. The other request is to delete two connection, pedestrian connection to parcel C-three. And we receive a letter from the Central Park Homeowner Association and in which they stated that only six percent of the residents of the total development doesn't, would, would like to maintain this pedestrian access. Staff recognized that is not the best planning practice, but the homeowner association stated that is already in place a six-foot berm and a concrete wall. And the distance, as the applicant says, there is a gated community with gated communities inside that doesn't promote right now the internal movements and interaction between the areas. And the other aspect is that we were measuring the distance that people have to walk, and the benefit of this pedestrian access are related to the Belvedere, Belvedere Court or the Tillman Street that are the closest streets to this pedestrian access because the rest of the residents in average have to walk like more than twenty-five-hundred feet to go to the commercial area. They are mentioned, safety concerns, and also that in the future, if this is open, if this pedestrian connection is built, they have to build a gate with the security in order to maintain, you know, the same characteristic that they have right now, it's a private community. And if you see here, this is like the same sketch that Katie Labar showed, the entrance that is approved through Tillman Park and the other connection to Belvedere Park. And this is the aerial that shows that in this area is where is located the actual go, wall and berm. And these, there are pictures of the wall and the berm. And this is a view from Tillman Court, you know, this is the view. Staff doesn't have objection to the request. Staff doesn't have objection to the request. In general, the request doesn't increase the overall density or intensity and there is only reallocation of acreage and we agree with the proposed stipulations. If you have any questions, I am able to answer.
Thank you. One of your slides said that parcels B, D, and E have 120-foot setback. That's B and, D and E have 120-foot, B has 160-foot, correct? That one?
Yes.
No, go back one more.
That one?
Yeah, the last sentence.
Yeah. The stipulation has been changed to show that 160-feet separation will be provided to parcel B from the residential units and no changes to parcel D and E.
Okay, you need to change your last sentence there.
This is a minimum.
A minimum.
Minimum.
Of 120. For us, nobody's, the D is in a strike through.
Okay.
The little B, it's like I put it like this in the staff report. The B is in a strike through.
Okay.
We strike the, sorry.
Not a problem.
Maybe it has to be.
I just got confused.
Sorry.
Any additional questions for staff? Okay, that was, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
All right, we're going to open the hearing up for public comment. So if there's anybody who wishes to come forward and speak on this matter, please do so now. Anyone at all? Seeing no one come forward, we're going to close the public comment portion of the hearing and go to staff closing comments. The bottle, nothing? Anyone? Any discussion or deliberation amongst the commissioners? Pretty exciting stuff. All right, well, if there's no discussion or deliberation, the chair will consider a motion.
Mr. Chair, I'll make the motion.
For clarification, two motions.
Are we doing one at a time or...
Yes, yes, please.
This is for, motion for ordinance 1732 Northwest Sector DRI number 26. Is that the correct?
Correct.
Correct. Based upon staff report, evidence presented, comments made at the public hearing, and finding the request to be consistent with the Manatee County Comprehensive Plan, the Manatee County Land Development Code, and Section 380.06 for a statute subject to conditions of approval established in the development order, I move to recommend approval of ordinance number 17-32 as recommended by staff.
Thank you. Who have a motion? Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Delazine, second. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, the chair will call the matter to vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. Chair votes aye, motion passes 5-0. Chair will consider a motion on item number five.
I'll make the motion, let me get to it, sir. Based upon staff report, evidence presented, comments made at the public hearing, and finding their request to be consistent with Manatee County Comprehensive Plan and the Manatee County Land Development Code as condition herein, I move to recommend approval of Manatee County Zoning Ordinance number PDMU-05-19GR8 for a project that was previously granted special approval for one mixed-use project in the UF-3 and RES-1 future land use categories. Two, exceeding gross density of 1.0 DU per acre in the UF3 Florida land use category. Three, exceeding the net density of 1.0 gross DU per acre in the RES, sorry, RES-3, the Florida land, future land use category. Four, exceeding 3,000 square feet of non-residential use. And five, partially in the Evers Reservoir watershed as recommended by staff.
Have a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Bauer, second. Is there any discussion or deliberation?
He said 3,000 instead of 30,000.
Oh, sorry, 30,000.
30,000.
Exceeding 30,000 square feet.
Amended motion, amended second? Mr. Bauer amended.
I didn't my glasses, sorry.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion or deliberation? Seeing none, the chair will call the matter to vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. Chair votes aye, motion passes 5-0. So that concludes our published agendas. Are there any other matters? Any business matters come forward? All right, we're going to close the meeting. Thank you very much.